Come to order. Welcome to the Midcoast Community Council Meeting for July 26, 2017. Will the council members please introduce themselves?
Dan Hagerty.
Lisa Ketchum.
Chris Johnson.
Dave Olson.
Brandon Kwan.
Laura Stein will not be with us tonight. First item on our agenda, oh, let me just say in case anybody's here for this item, we're pulling an item from our agenda tonight who will not be hearing. Two B, Arbor Lane, that's not going to be heard tonight. Thank you. So, first item is the Board of Supervisors' report. We have Ellie Dolman.
All righty. Good evening, Midcoast Community Council, Midcoast community. My name is Ellie Dolman. I'm here on behalf of the Office of Supervisor Horsley with the County of San Mateo. And my update this evening is brief, just two items. The first is regarding the Broadway Street End Project in Princeton. That went before the Planning Commission this morning and they did approve the project. They're really happy about the proposed amenities at that location. So, that is moving forward. I believe the next step will be actually implementing the project. So, I'll be following up with DPW and Parks to make sure we move that right along. And then the second item I have is just a brief update on the Coastside Beach Shuttle. Weekends only, it's free for all riders. We're up to about an average of 70 riders per month for the last three months. So, we've, you know, seen a steady increase since it, since the shuttle began during more of the winter months. And there's still efforts being made to increase the marketing around the beach shuttle to bring more attention, so people know about it.
I've noticed on the approaches to the various beachfront parks, there's an effort been made, I think mostly about the city of Heffman Bay, to direct people to different parking lots if one is full. And there are big signs up, but I was wondering if the county would be interested in adding information about the beach shuttle to the signs that are directly next to the various beaches?
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea. There, are they lighted signs?
No, they're not.
Oh, no, okay, they're just like signage?
Wood, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I can bring that back to Chris Hunter and see if that might be something he could talk with. Would it be state parks?
I think Heffman Bay parks and probably state parks. No, definitely Heffman Bay parks. But something really informal to let people know who are wandering around trying to figure out where to park, if there is an option.
Definitely. Yeah, I'll pass that on.
Ellie, per the coast side shuttle, I think it's been a couple of weeks on the rose. I can't, I believe you and I had a phone conversation about the coast side shuttles in which I think I was sitting next to one in traffic, but I couldn't tell for sure. And to me, that would be like, if you're gonna do something about the marketing, put some kind of wrap around them or something that says, because otherwise they just look like a white Samtrans bus or shuttle that you don't know what it is. But it needs to have a big colorful wrap on it that says, "This is the coast side shuttle. This is the one you're looking for." Because right now, it just blends into anything else. I didn't even, I worked with Chris on this, I don't even know if that was it or not. And there was nothing to confirm visually that that was the coast side shuttle.
Yeah, I know they've been working on adding signage, just as you're talking about, that wraps around the bus. I think, you know, initially they were talking, thinking about doing magnet signs on the sides, but it turns out the buses are not completely metal to allow that to happen. So, I know they are working on that, but I'll, I'll be sure to bring that back to them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the Princeton Street Ends, Chapter Two.
You know, we had the agenda item and made some comments.
Would you prefer that we write a letter or something to make sure that I didn't, does the team, is the team aware of our discussion that evening? And do they have the PowerPoint? I thought that that, those slides would be useful going through the project as a reference, the maps and all. Is there anything else we need to do to make sure they get the message?
Um, I think, I'll take a look back at the presentation just to confirm, but I, you know, I'll, and I'll make sure to reiterate to them that really the primary goal is looking at Columbia as the first step, and then this, you know, if there's remaining funding, then VASR would be the second priority.
Yeah, and we had, we did say that stairs would be preferable at Columbia, so if, when they come, it would be good if they explained if that's not what they got, why that didn't work and why they're doing.
That's great, yeah.
So, it should, it should follow on from that presentation. And if a letter is preferred, we could do that.
Okay.
I just, you know, wanted to make sure the effort.
It's not lost in communication, yeah.
So, just let us know if there's more that we need to do as far as getting the word to the people that are working on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else for Ellie? Anyone from the audience?
I have an announcement.
Chris?
I apologize if you guys spoke about this in a hurry, but Ellie, are you aware of what's going on down at Gray Whale? Now, Gray Whale Cove is sort of taking the overflow, it seems, from Trinity's Creek with the big parties on Friday and Saturday nights, and there was a piece of little trash left last week.
Yeah, I know our office and Supervisor Horsley has received a number of emails with concerns about the garbage and the activity. So, he is aware and the county is aware. It is a state beach, so it's really kind of something that, you know, the county will look to work with state parks and see what, how we might be able to assist. But we have notified state parks and they're aware of the activity, and I know that that's something moving forward that, you know, we'll be working with them on.
Yeah, it's a tricky one, because it's all happening after hours. And, you know, it really seems like it's a tenuous situation where, you know, state parks doesn't have the capacity to even manage that unit during the day, because of how difficult it is to get down to the beach and the limited staffing levels. But once, you know, the thing really takes off, you know, at night, when you're not as close to the staff as gone home. So, I was just wondering if you'd please consider bringing up the possibility of the sheriff's office becoming way more involved and seriously consider Ed Brenner's request to turn that into a tollway zone after hours. Because, Ed, we're state parks, it's just, you know, we're gonna be able to take that problem.
They do have arranger in residence right nearby.
But at the top of the stairs, there's 127 stairs down to that beach, you know?
It's pretty obvious from the road.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, and in terms of limiting the parking, that would really be something, you know, whether if it's on Caltrans right of way, that would be the state, or within state parks, it would really be items to bring up with them. But I'll definitely bring back your concerns again to the supervisor and let him know that.
It could certainly be folded into the Gray Whale Parking Lot Reconfiguration Project.
Thanks, Ellie.
So, next item on the agenda is...
So, I just want to make a quick announcement. This Saturday, the 29th, is the Devil's Slide Ride. We've had the, this has been going on for several years. It's a bicycle ride with different lengths, so there'll be riders all up and down the coast side for a good portion of the day. They have a shorter route this time that doesn't go very much farther than Heffman Bay. Their return route is gonna be on Sunshine Valley Road, so the organizers were here, they let us know that. I've asked them to give people as much notice as possible, like maybe one of those electronic signs that says, "Hey, next Saturday, there's gonna be bicycle riders on this road." They got back to me and said that was too expensive, but they're trying to post things on Nextdoor and Facebook, and so I'm trying to help them out by just announcing that on Saturday from about 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., there's gonna be about 50 to 100 cyclists spread out, so it's not, there's not gonna be big clumps of them, there's gonna be people that are dying just to get back to Pacifica, coming up and down, going northbound on Sunshine Valley Road. So, if you have neighbors there or you drive that, keep an eye out for that, there shouldn't be too many. It's the best route they could find rather than putting them back on Highway One for the whole time. Please be aware of those riders on Saturday. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Anybody have anything to say that is not on the agenda tonight? Bill? I'm sorry, you're next.
I'm so glad to see you back, Chris.
I saw the video from last time, Bill.
And this is for you, and it fits right into what you just talked about. Bill Keel from West Beach. I noticed the other day coming back home that they have a sign up along one of the curves in Montero where possibly Richard Morse's car went over. I guess they still don't have the definitive yet. But one thing that, and I'm glad they're taking that action, and it will probably at least get Caltrans to start thinking about something. But while they're at it, while you weren't here, I mentioned, I think it was last time when Supervisor Horsley was here, you're a bike rider, so you know this even better than I, but I'm seeing more and more bikes going from Lindemar up to the north end of the tunnel and also through the coast side to the south end of the tunnel. And there's no breakdown lane. In fact, most of the place, well, not most of them, but a large areas along both sides of the road have less than a couple of inches for a bike before they're on the fog line or actually over into the lane. There's a new state law that was passed, you probably know this, where bicycles are supposed to be given three feet of clearance. And there's no way you can give them three feet of clearance without driving into the oncoming lane in some of these. And it just seems, I mean, I'm not asking them to put in a full breakdown lane, but if they're reconfiguring, like say around Gray Whale Cove, that part of that plan should be for the future expansion of both the breakdown lane and, you know, like a double duty as a bicycle ride. It could just be me, but I'm just, I think we're getting more bike tourists here, and there's, it's just, it's another accident waiting to happen. And I know you guys can't change it. I know Supervisor Horsley will say, "Well, that's a Caltrans issue," but he's worked with us before when I was on the council, we're trying to get Caltrans to help us out on other issues. I think if we just keep a constant drum up on this, maybe something... Who's the youngest person in the room right now? Whoever. You.
Maybe before, you know, we all pass away. Brandon.
Brandon, of course. Maybe you can get a documentary. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Hello, council members. Erin Dyenser, Montero. So, I just wanted to make mention of the fact that I went to a San Francisco Airport Roundtable meeting in June. A lot of people have mentioned the fact that there is a huge increase in airplane traffic over the midcoast. And what I've come to find out during the course of my research is, a couple of years ago, and maybe I'm preaching to the choir and people know this, but a couple of years ago, the FAA decided that they could save money if they allowed their airplanes to fly lower on takeoff. And they also would save money on fuel if they had their planes go back and forth doing the same route all day, every day. So, what's now happened is that, my house on Seventh Street, I'm literally right beneath an aerial highway. I mean, I stand in my backyard and I look up and see the belly of a plane fairly frequently because I'm on the Southern California run, apparently. So, at any rate, I went to the meeting and there were other people there from the midcoast, and everybody was, the five of us were pretty, pretty angry and felt like we hadn't been kind of included in the dialogue. And what I also learned that night is Supervisor Dave Pine has been asked to represent the unincorporated areas of San Mateo County in this issue. And I talked to him afterwards and said, "I've never heard, I've never heard from you, I've never heard about you. Supervisor Horsley has never mentioned anything about it, and I would really like you to come and do a presentation at the Midcoast Community Council meeting, or a Midcoast Community Council meeting, so that you can address the community, let us know what the issues are, what's being done to mitigate the noise and the air pollution." And at any rate, so that is something I would like to be able to work with the council to accommodate. I'm in touch with him and I will be in touch with his assistant, Linda, to try to coordinate a presentation. And I'm not exactly sure what the, sort of the protocol is from here, but I will reach out to you and hopefully we can get that on the agenda for the future. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Erin. Anybody?
I will say in response to that, that Jackie Spear put out a press release yesterday, and it's on her House website with the FAA response to the various requests. So, you should go look at that if you're interested. Supervisor Horsley did mention that to me in person as well, and he and Dave Pine have been communicating. And I think Dave Pine's been seeing pretty much all the coastal input on that.
Okay, this would be more about community endeavor, as opposed to the supervisors speaking to one another. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay. Next item on the agenda is consent. We have the minutes for July 12. Your motion?
I will move to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Second.
501, Chris abstains.
Did read the minutes and see the video, but it wasn't yours. I didn't get the feel.
The regular agenda, the first item is progress update on county cannabis regulations. We have Andrew Berthelsen with the county, and I'm sorry, I don't know your current title there.
I'm...
The Cannabis Guy?
Sure. Keep going back. There's no business car on that, so we'll just, that's fine. It's good to be back, thanks for having me. So, just wanted to provide you the brief overview of kind of what the state situation is, the decisions the county has made already, will be making in the future, and kind of the opportunities going forward for, for future decisions. So, I'm gonna divide this into kind of two parts. The first part we'll talk about our commercial activities, and then we're gonna talk about the non-commercial activities. There's a lot of other stuff the county is dealing with in terms of the public health issues and prevention and outreach. We're gonna skip that for today's purposes, but if you have questions about any of that, I'm happy to, you know, try and give you updates on some of those things the county is working on. So, perfect. So, here's a little bit of the framework, the history of how we've gotten to the current state of legalized commercial cannabis, or marijuana in the state of California. So, some of you may recall back in 96, Prop 215, the Compassionate Care Act was passed, and that basically allowed individual patients and individual caregivers to grow and consume and provide to people who were their, their patients. It was very small scale, again, there's, there's no money involved, it's just medicinal. Then in 2004, the Medical Marijuana Program Act was passed, and that allowed the more formal collectives and cooperatives to be formed. After that, the county and a number of other local jurisdictions passed ordinances that would have permitted those in their jurisdictions. The county had one on the books since, I think, 2009. A few applicants over the years, no one ever got through the approval process. There are, as you know, under, under that, three dispensaries up in Pacifica. Those are currently the only ones anywhere in the county that are licensed. And that was kind of the way things were for a while. You were supposed to have, you know, doctor's permission, and you were supposed to only be able to either grow for yourself under the previous Prop 215 rules, or purchase through a collective or cooperative, thanks to the MMPA. Then, two years ago, year and a half ago, the legislature passed a series of bills that collectively were called the MCSRA. And that was supposed to take it from a nonprofit collective model to kind of big cannabis, but all still under the medicinal umbrella. So, if someone had a prescription, they were gonna be able to go to a for-profit company, you'll be able to grow for profit, you're able to sell for profit, there are gonna be, you know, commercial distribution. And that was really a professionalization of, you know, marijuana as a crop as, in the state of California. That was all supposed to go into effect, and those licenses were gonna be issued this coming January. So, there was about a year and a half of need time for all, the state to figure all that out and for local governments to figure all that out. And then a group of folks got together and copied a lot of that language and put it on the ballot for Prop 64. And this past November, Prop 64 was passed pretty overwhelmingly in San Mateo County, I think it was one of the three highest counties in the, in the state, it was very high approval here. And it passed by two-thirds, I think, in all but two towns in the county. So, it was pretty overwhelmingly supported here. And Prop 64 basically took that framework for, you know, allowing for-profit businesses, and you can still be a nonprofit, but allowing for-profit businesses, who had to get licenses from the state. And it said, you know, "We're gonna get all this accomplished in that same timeline, and even though this Prop 64 was passed this past November, next January, businesses are gonna be able to apply for a state license, assuming they have local approval, and be able to operate a for-profit business selling, or growing, or manufacturing marijuana cannabis products." But what we really were left with, with Prop 64, were two parallel systems. There was a system of, there was a system of, you know, medicinal cannabis regulation, and then an identical system of non-medicinal or recreational cannabis. And so, just a month and a half ago, at the bottom right, you'll see MAU CRSA, because I don't have factor names up there. And that was the legislature's attempt to merge the two. Now, one was a ballot measure and one was stuff they'd previously done, but they tried to combine it all, so you basically have, from an applicant's perspective, the same regulatory scheme at the state level. So, that's kind of the state legal framework, quite the path, but you see, we went from a nonprofit and medically focused, kind of small model, to suddenly, you know, a very elaborate, potentially for-profit model with lots of state regulation, which we'll get to, you can slip to the next slide. And, and so there's a lot of work the state's been doing, they're, you know, trying to draft regulations. There are different state departments. CFA is Food and Ag, they oversee farmers. And they use our county agricultural office to do a lot of that inspection work already. For manufacturing and distribution and testing and the dispensaries, you have different state agencies. California Department of Public Health, BMCR, which was a new agency, it's been renamed three times because of all these different bills before we actually regulated anything. It's now actually gonna be the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and it's gonna be, just like ABC regulates alcohol in the state of California, it's gonna be the same thing but for marijuana in the state of California. And actually, the executive officer of that new state department actually came from ABC. So, you're gonna see a lot of similar regulations coming out of the state, trying to regulate marijuana-like alcohol in a lot of ways. And similar to how some other states like Colorado, Washington, and Oregon have already made progress in doing so. So, if you go back real quick, okay, so you see all these different, you know, manufacturing, cultivation, distribution, testing. So, there are all different license classes that you will act, these businesses will be applying to different state departments to get. Let's go to the next one now. So, the first kind of group is cultivation, obviously the earliest part of the supply stream. Someone has to grow it before you can do anything else with it. So, there are all these different types of cultivation licenses, and it's divided between whether it's gonna be indoor, or outdoor, or mixed light, which is greenhouses, whether you're gonna be growing just a small plot of land or something really big. The nursery, down type four, they'll see towards the bottom, people who are just growing kind of the baby plants, you know, they aren't gonna be harvested yet, but they're, they're called starts. We have a lot of nursery business here already, but it's, it's very similar to that. And then the big licenses, you'll see on the right, the type five licenses, people won't be able to even apply to the state until 2023. And the idea is really to allow smaller, local folks, California folks, to engage, and we won't have big tobacco coming in and taking over this industry in California. That's, that was kind of the thinking behind it. So, those are all the cultivation license types. Switch to the next one. The manufacturing area. So, manufacturing can be a couple of different things. It can be extraction into oils and, and different types of products like that. It can be creation of edible products, which has to also be regulated and labeled. And that can be done in a couple of different ways. Some of that's, again, non-volatile solvents, not to get too into the details, that's pretty harmless stuff. Volatile solvents, that can use like propane and other things, so there's some concerns about regulating that a little more stringently. Testing. So, as part of this whole system, there needs to be accuracy to make sure products are labeled correctly, that people aren't getting really, really strong products that are labeled not so strong, that there aren't pesticides in them, that there aren't, there's a mold on products. So, products are gonna be tested all along the supply chain, and so there's a separate licensing class for that, and we can skip the microbusiness for now. So, retail sales and other licensing activities. So, this is probably the first thing people think about when you think about legalizing marijuana, is you're gonna have more of these dispensaries, more sales. And certainly, that's part of it, but you'll notice that's only one license type of 12 we have up here. So, retail licenses, there's actually two kinds. There can be the formal brick and mortar, or there can be one that just does essentially deliveries, and the state will authorize both of those. Distributors are, and that's actually been changed, but distributors are people who kind of transport between different license types, so they're, they're handling that and providing security along the way. In microbusiness, I'll just say briefly, a microbusiness, it's very small-scale cultivation, but they're allowed to do cultivation, manufacturing, some extraction, and sales on a single site. So, it's kind of a specialty license. People have equated it to like craft beer brewery or craft distillery, or if you go to a winery and you can see them grow it, see them manufacture it, and taste it all on sight. That's kind of what the state was going at with the microbusiness. So, again, all of these different activities have to get a state license. They are not gonna offer licenses to anyone who also has an alcohol license or a tobacco license, so you won't see a corner store also selling cannabis. It's gonna be a dedicated business usually. There's a state minimum threshold of 600 feet from a school, daycare center, or youth center. And individuals aren't gonna be eligible to get one if they don't meet certain criteria. There's a background check component to the state licensing process. Now, locally, we can prohibit. Cities and counties can say, "We don't want any of this commercial activity, we aren't ready for it, or, you know, we don't think we can regulate it, or our communities don't want it," and they can just prohibit it. And if they prohibit it, the state will not issue a license. It's pretty simple. So, so there is some local control to this. It's not like the state's gonna just be handing these out without, you know, any local awareness. However, if states don't adopt, or if cities or counties don't adopt something, either a moratorium or an ordinance for regulation, theoretically, the state could issue licenses. So, one of the things, you know, to keep in mind is, you know, what your initial reaction to that is as a local jurisdiction. Now, we can regulate, or we can completely ban all of these things. So, we can offer just cultivation, just manufacturing, just sales, and we can also regulate them much stricter than the state has. We cannot ban the transportation through the jurisdiction or delivery, so that's something that county and the cities can't do. So, in November, Prop 64 passed. We hadn't yet had this merger proposal, but we had these two things kind of floating out there. So, the Board of Supervisors adopted an interim ordinance back in January, I believe it was. They might have had it original in December. And essentially, it said, "We're not gonna license or allow any of these activities right now. We haven't figured out what the system's gonna look like. The state hasn't adopted regulations yet. So, we're gonna ban all of these activities." And they've essentially have that in place till December 12 of 2017. So, it can be extended beyond there, or they can adopt an ordinance to regulate stuff before then. So, that's kind of the status quo for commercial activities. So, the second part of this is the non-commercial activities, and Prop 64, what that did for personal cultivation and personal use. So, under Prop 64, individuals over 21 can lawfully use, possess, transport, or give away small amounts of marijuana cannabis, and they can grow up to six plants. Under state law, again, that cultivation must occur in a locked area within private residence, not visible from a public space. So, under state law, and that's the minimum threshold, the plant cannot be visible from public. The most, a household can grow six plants, and it's supposed to be locked. That's the state minimum threshold. And again, locals can go further than that. The restrictions on personal use. Basically, you can't use it in a public place unless it's, you know, allowed. Some places are very liberal for that. I'm sure some of you have been around San Francisco and other places where marijuana's being smoked much more out in the public than it is probably here. You know, the county has in place, you know, prohibitions about smoking on beaches and other things around public buildings. Those all automatically applied over. You see, anywhere where smoking tobacco is prohibited, the default is also that smoking marijuana, even though it's legal, would be prohibited. And in addition to the 600-feet barrier for commercial activities, there is a 1,000-feet barrier where you're not allowed to use or smoke from any of those facilities. You're also not supposed to have an open container in a vehicle. And the state's working out details about driving under the influence and how they're gonna measure that, like they do DUIs. Still kind of a work in progress, there's pending legislation on that. But again, the county can go above and beyond these state minimum thresholds on personal cultivation and personal use. We can place reasonable restrictions on cultivation for personal use. So, a city or county can say, "You can only grow it in your garage," or "You can only grow it in a locked room," or, you know, "You have to make sure the windows are covered." They can make restrictions like that. Some places have gotten very strict on that, and there's some litigation out there from people who think cities or counties have gotten a little too strict. And ultimately, we're prohibited from banning personal cultivation. So, there is essentially established right, people can grow six marijuana plants, it can be regulated, but we can't prohibit that. Landlords can prohibit it. So, if anyone is a renter or live in an apartment building, your landlord is allowed... So if anyone is a renter or live in an apartment building, your landlord is allowed to block you from growing plants. And employers are still allowed to prohibit that. So nothing in Prop 64 or in subsequent legislation prevents employers from doing drug testing or anything like that. So they're still allowed to discriminate in that regard. So I mentioned the county interim ordinance and how it kind of banned commercial activities till the county could figure everything else out. So it also addressed some of this personal cultivation issue. It kind of took the simplest stand possible, which was you can't grow six plants outdoors. So under the current interim ordinance, folks in the unincorporated area, and again, cities are doing different things on this, they're allowed to grow up to six plants for personal use indoors. That's the status quo. And that, again, remains in place till December 12th. And either the county can roll that back, or it can get tougher about it, but that's the status quo. So that's kind of the simple summation of the commercial activities and the non-commercial activities. If you can go back a few to the cultivation slide, it was, I want to say, like the fifth or sixth one? Perfect. So when the county put the interim ordinance in place, it also said, let's work with the cities. Let's figure out what all the cities are going to do. And as some of you have seen, Pacifica is starting to regulate and wants to permit a lot of activities. Hafn Bay is looking to permit cultivation. And so the board supervisors, we have a subcommittee of Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Pine. And, you know, they've been taking a closer look at this issue. And we've kind of zeroed in on cultivation as something we may permit in the unincorporated area. There have been no decisions made by the board yet. There was a follow-up study session last month where the board gave direction to begin working on a cultivation ordinance. There's no indication they're going to permit other activities, but those are going to be studied further. So manufacturing dispensaries will be studied in a further future board study session. And a draft cultivation ordinance will be reviewed by the board. Like, it could be passed, it could be rejected. But the focus of it at this point is not allowing outdoor cultivation for commercial purposes. And so limiting any larger-scale cultivation to greenhouses and indoor cultivation. There's less of an odor issue with that, and there's less of a security issue with that. So, you know, that seemed to be kind of the preference for the board subcommittee. Again, no final direction, but that seems to be, that's where we're headed at this moment. So happy to answer any further questions about that. Again, this remains, you know, a work in progress. The state regulations have not even been finalized yet. Those are going to come out as emergency regulations later this year. But a lot of jurisdictions are kind of scrambling to introduce either permanent moratoriums or extended moratoriums, or come up with a way to regulate this stuff. So that's where we are. Any questions about any of this, I'd be happy to provide a lot more context.
So to start off, do the council members have any qualifying questions for Andrew?
Andrew, I read the staff report that Lisa posted to our website, and I only saw one mention of industrial hemp. How does that, how does industrial hemp fit into this?
So industrial hemp is technically legal under separate legislation. It wasn't included in any of those, the evolution of legalization. It's allowed under certain federal law, actually. The difference here is none of this is allowed under federal law, and I skipped over that. But the federal government still considers cannabis Schedule I drug. The current attorney general, as some of you may have heard, would like to go after states who permit this, and that's kind of overhanging a lot of this. But hemp is very different. It's, it's not addressed in this regulatory scheme. Under existing law, it's also not covered in our moratorium. So industrial hemp is eligible for cultivation in San Mateo County and other places. There are certain other restrictions you have to meet to register with the state and register with their ag commissioner, but that's separate from this licensing structure. And it's separate from the state licensing structure I described as well.
How long has industrial hemp been legal in this county?
It's a, it's a evolution. So there's a new, there's a new industrial hemp advisory board at the state level, which is also working on regulations to specify that. Industrial hemp is legal currently for research purposes in this county and others, but you need to get like a CSU or UC to sign off on it, that you're growing it for research purposes. When those new regulations are adopted, and again, this is separate from what we're talking about here, there really, there's no local approval check-in. So I mentioned how all of these licenses require local approval. That industrial hemp thing isn't going to require local approval or local licensing. There will be a notification of the agricultural commissioner, which is kind of the status quo with the research hemp. But that's, again, separate from this structure completely. And as an interesting note, if we do allow industrial hemp cultivation, there is concern about growing that near these types of crops, because you get cross-pollination and weakening the strains and things like that. So typically, they try not to grow them in the same areas. There are concerns about that. Obviously reduced when you're growing only indoor or in a greenhouse, but...
Any other council members? Dan?
Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned that the, there was going to be some thought to try to avoid big tobacco, large, you know...
Yeah.
Corporations taking control. So how does the indoor-outdoor policy support that?
So the, so that was language, kind of that intent to not allow big tobacco or some other big, either the drug cartels too, someone else outside to come in, was an intent in both the previous kind of medicinal language that the legislature adopted and in 64. Under the latest proposal, they actually had to scale some of that back. So there is originally a requirement that any applicant be a California resident. That's gone now at the state level. We can have certain restrictions in our county ordinance. So we can say, you know, someone has to have been farming for, you know, this parcel before. We can have rules in there at the local level, and that's kind of some of the stuff we're figuring out with our agricultural community now. But really, the biggest thing was just not allowing the large license types. So you typically won't see, if you are a big company, you want to come in, you want a big commercial farm, you want to be able to farm over an acre or something like that. And because the license types are limited to 22,000 square feet or less for the largest at this point, that probably will dissuade some of the larger folks. That's the thought.
And the indoor-outdoor policy? You mentioned odor and security.
And security, yeah. Those are, those were the two kind of driving things. I think for the sheriff's office in particular and lots of law enforcement, you know, outdoor presents some unique problems. It's also part of why, you know, the county has prohibited on an interim basis, outdoor personal cultivation, because someone can very easily hop over a fence and grab your six plants versus in a locked greenhouse or a locked building, you have some additional security in place. The odor issue is another one. So you probably are all familiar with that petrulie smell. I'm sure you've smelled it at some point around here. But it gets apparently much stronger right at harvest. So you may have a relatively inert plant, but when you have a giant field of it, and it's all blooming at the same time, there can be some significant odor concerns, particularly when you get some coastal breezes coming in. So we're not the only area which has looked to prohibit outdoor. Another reason why outdoor cultivation is probably not going to be what the board supervisors wants to do is because they're very concerned about agricultural protection. And the idea that we would be displacing too much of our existing agricultural product. We don't want to lose the artichokes, the other things that are there. But we have excess capacity in some of our greenhouses. The cut flower industry in particular has seen a decline of late, and both the city of Hafn Bay and the county have, I think I can say, a couple million square feet of excess greenhouse space at this point. So that's part of it.
To help the...
To help the farm.
People that have the greenhouses.
Right. Existing, yeah.
So if members of the public want to ask questions, could you come up to the microphone? Otherwise, it won't be captured on the camera. Anybody wish to speak on this? Bill?
Thank you, Andrew. Your presentation.
I have just a quick question. When the county starts to set up its own rules, can they, do they have to do it county-wide, like one size fits all, or could they actually do different rules, like in different unincorporated areas, like something in Rhodemore is different than something on the coast side versus North Fair Oaks?
So there's no prescription from the state how locals approve or disapprove. So, you know, if a jurisdiction wanted to put rules in their zoning code, they could do that, and they could kind of differentiate between areas.
They're all controlled by the county.
Right. Well, so our inclination is to try and do this through business licensing program, because you don't have to mess up a lot of that. Now, I mentioned the county's priority at this point is looking at cultivation, which is going to be indoor or mixed light. Now, particularly with mixed light, there aren't a lot of greenhouses elsewhere in the county. I mean, I can show you the list of all the greenhouse space in the county, and you got like two up in Colma, unincorporated area, but it's, we're essentially talking about the coast. And really, not that much on the mid-coast either, I would point out. A lot of it's more south coast, where you have those greenhouse structures. So that's kind of the first, you know, differentiator to between different areas. You know, North Fair Oaks does not have that type of a space. You don't have that in Broadmoor or the Highlands. You know, you have residential areas which don't have commercial space to begin with. And one of the things we saw when the county adopted the 2009 ordinance for the old dispensary model was, you know, there were areas where we didn't necessarily want to see activities. So we adopted larger buffers. So I said the state minimum right now is 600-feet buffer from schools and childcare facilities. In the county ordinance that's already on the books for medicinal dispensaries, the default setback is 1,000 feet. Now, I can show you the maps of all the little different unincorporated pockets, but 1,000 feet from, you know, playground, childcare facility, school, pretty much eliminates a lot of unincorporated land. You've got, you know, a few blocks here, a few blocks there, where you might be able to do that. And that land, it may not be zoned under existing zoning for an agricultural activity, because there's not a lot of agricultural overlays on the baside. So if the, if the board wanted to look at dispensaries or manufacturing, that's a very relevant question that we're going to need to work a lot closer on. But because the priority right now is cultivation, there's less need to differentiate, I would say.
Anybody else in the public? Any questions or comments? Council members?
Yes.
Chris?
Andrew, great presentation. I mean, you definitely know your stuff, so please don't take this personally, but this is very frustrating for me, because this just, once again, like I feel that a government entity is going for a quick grab here. I know that the county did not pass this. This was a state law, but it's already very confusing for people, because it's federally illegal, but you can get a card or whatever you can get. So you can do it, but then you can't do it. And now we've got another layer on here, where now the state says you can do it, federally you can't do it, and then locally, you may not be able to do it. And so it's that kind of confusing legal structure. How's anybody supposed to navigate that and know exactly when and where they can do that? So to have an entity that we are associated with San Mateo County participating, that I find frustrating. On top of that, we've decided to go for cultivation, because we have the greenhouse space, so we're going to grow it and make it somebody else's problem. Right? We're not going to, right now, retail, you can't buy it, you can't, you know, grow it yourself, but we're going to grow the heck out of it in greenhouses and then have it go and be somebody else's problem, where they're going to have to legislate how they want their commercial stores to be and stuff. So I find that extremely hypocritical, and also another one of these grabs for the easy low-hanging fruit. Third, that's why I asked the question about industrial hemp. I've long wanted to see San Mateo County, our open greenhouse spaces, our fields that are lying fallow, or whatever the problem seems to be that we want to grow pot there now, for industrial hemp. But as you've pointed out, that has its own Byzantine legal structure of somehow industrial hemp is now harder to grow and more illegal to grow than intoxicating cannabis. So that doesn't make any sense to me either. And to me, I say to the county, if you really want to fill these greenhouses and you want to grow something where you don't have a bunch of security issues, and you don't have a worry about them cross-pollinating, that you grow industrial hemp, which has a lot more applicable uses and benefits than just intoxicating cannabis. So for those three reasons, I'm not pleased that we have this additional confusing structure. And I'm not pleased that the county went for the low-hanging fruit with cultivation only, leaving it to be somebody else's problem. And lastly, I would really like to see the county, like, turn up the, turn up the acceleration on industrial hemp. That has a lot of economic and environmental benefits, and the fact that it's still illegal on pretty much every level is just absolutely ridiculous and highlights hypocrisy of all drug policies, unfortunately, including this one, which seems to be more progressive, but still is incredibly confusing. Thank you for listening to that. A great presentation, and...
Can I offer some clarification on a couple of things?
Absolutely, please.
I think all your points are valid, but...
But not correct.
Well, no, there's...
Not the first.
First of all, the legal mess, you're absolutely right. There is a very awkward situation where the federal government, you know, continues to classify something as a Schedule I drug, and California and a number of other states have been pushing for that to change. The legislature at the federal level has prevented enforcement, blocked enforcement for a while. We can get into a lot more about why the feds probably aren't going to be cracking down, but it still remains illegal. You're completely right. The California decision to start legalizing began with kind of the medicinal aspect of it. It really did. And we saw through the progression, you know, the only time we started offering for recreational purposes was when people put Prop 64 on the ballot. So that wasn't the county, that wasn't the legislature, the governor. It happened to be the lieutenant governor and some other people, but that was the voters. You know, by a two-thirds majority of the state of California, they said, knowing full well the federal situation, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to prohibit this. We're going to regulate and legalize it in the state of California. There's no quick get-around to that. We can't overturn Prop 64 without going back to the ballot and saying it's legal everywhere. And we also can't get the federal government to overnight change their mind on it. That will require a different administration, most likely. So we're going to be in this state of legal uncertainty for quite a while, and I can offer you no solace there. With regards to the county's decision to grow and not do other things, I want to go back to kind of that zoning issue and the setback issue. I mean, really, if you look at where the county has unincorporated pockets, growing's the only thing we can do. There are a few places where maybe we could cite a dispensary or two, but even here on the mid-coast, there are a lot of spots. We look at the strip, you've got a childcare facility here on the strip, right? Which if you put, look, a 600-foot buffer is going to probably hit a lot of this. And if you do 1,000-foot, it definitely will. So you have those constraints elsewhere, and really, the only place where that buffer zone isn't a problem is when you get out in the rural areas, is where you get out where the farms are. So that's kind of why we directed that way. If you're in a big city like San Francisco or LA, you're going to have some really commercial zones, or some really industrial zones. And those state minimum thresholds, you know, they're not going to be a problem. And in some of the cities in San Mateo, they may not be. You know, in San Mateo or Brisbane or Daly City, if they wanted to do that, they might be able to. And that's a separate, you know, political decision that the board's making. But the county has some constraint choices, and that's part of why I think they're making this kind of limited focus at the moment. With regard to industrial hemp, I can tell you, it will be easier to grow industrial hemp, you know, next year than any of this cannabis product, because we aren't going to have a local licensing program. And we aren't going to locally prohibit industrial hemp. Yes, the state still needs to work out what they're going to do, but certainly, the trend on that is devoid of some of the federal issues, and certainly devoid of additional local issues. So it's really going to be kind of state and local check-in. And I'd be happy to put you in touch with our agricultural commissioner and give you a lot more details about that, because I actually think there's some people who are going to start growing industrial hemp in the next year or so.
Great. Yes, that'd be great. I'll check with you. I'll email you. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
So did, everybody? Thank you. Oh, Dan, one more thing?
Yeah, sorry. Back to the indoor/outdoor. Did you, so, so I think what you're saying is that outdoor prohibited 100%, no matter what?
That was the, that's the direction we got from the board.
Okay. So how...
Again, nothing is final. We have interim ordinance in place.
I don't even know how it's, you know, looked at today.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, is it legal to grow under certain... Can I ask you, is it, is it legal to grow under certain circumstances outside today? Some cases?
In San Mateo County, you cannot grow outside.
Period?
Period. You can grow six plants indoor for personal use.
But, okay. Other counties may, might be different?
Other counties, so certainly you get up the Emerald Triangle and some other areas, more rural areas, there's outdoor cultivation.
So I, I, I'm just, uh, thinking here in my chair that, uh, you know, the rural areas that we like to hike in are now going to be concentrated and probably, uh, high fences, barbed wire, guns to protect. What, what, uh, what could you say to kind of, uh, relax some of the community members that really love to visit, you know, the rural, uh, hike in the areas and, and ride bicycles? To not feel, pardon?
Why do you think there's, sorry, I don't see where they're going to be new fences?
Are you talking about throughout the state or in San Mateo County?
Yeah, in San Mateo County. I would guess that if a greenhouse is in full operation, there's going to be a lot of, you know, uh, value inside. And the owners are going to do what they need to do to protect it.
Well, okay, so you think they're going to put up extra fences around greenhouses?
Maybe.
Uh, it's entirely possible they try and do that. I'll point out that would require a CDP most likely. Uh, they, they want to put up some extra high fences and things. You know, we're working on what our restrictions are going to be, but I think certainly you're, you're less inclined to have a high fence and additional security when you have a locked building or a locked greenhouse than when you have a crop grown outdoors. And that was part of the push towards the greenhouse or indoor versus allowing outdoor cultivation. So that you wouldn't have more 12 feet fences on fields too, you know? Does that make sense?
It does, but I would think that, you know, someone with that much value in the greenhouse is going to go to, uh, a little bit of extra efforts, you know, to protect someone from breaking their glass and getting in.
Uh, and, and, you know, that's an issue I'm happy to pass on as the board looks at this further, you know, what those security features, you know, do visually. Obviously visual impacts for any project that would, you know, need to get a CDP are, they're going to be vital. Part of envisioning this was transitioning existing greenhouse space because you don't have those external impacts, you don't have those new visual impacts. But it's possible that, you know, folks want to do additional measures or put up additional accessory structures and, uh, you know, maybe that, I, my guess is that would require additional planning permits. But that's, that's something we can certainly review further.
So, I'll, I'll add one thing to that. I, I think I've seen some responses to this anyway, but I think I can speak for almost everybody on the mid-coast and the south coast that we don't want to see armed guards at the greenhouses.
SWAT vehicles.
Is that it, folks?
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much.
So the next item is, well, we have three, well, two. Planning application referrals. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, the Arbor Lane item is postponed. We won't be talking about that tonight. So the first item is Ron Stefanic here?
Right here.
Oh, great. Could you put the first one on? Start at the beginning of the story. So Moss Beach Chevron, um, this is, this has been in the conversation for a long time. On that side of the highway, several businesses there. It's a wide open access to the highway and people asked us to do something about it. So we wrote a letter in three years ago, actually, about this planter, which as you can see in 2011, the street view shows the planter in front. And then the next slide, uh, shows in 2013, it's all been paved over. So we pointed this out and asked, uh, what could be done. So, now, three years later, so the next slide, uh, here's the plan. And, uh, the applicant is here tonight to help us out with questions and whatnot. And, uh, so I put in red what is proposed. So that, and there's a typo in the letter. It's supposed to say 34 by three feet for the replacement, which is under two square feet. And the letter basically is saying that our whole point in doing this was to, uh, make it safer for pedestrians and bikes going along the highway there. And you have this area now where this is just a huge paved area with, uh, no structure to it at all. Cars coming in, going out in any direction, moving quickly to get into a break of traffic. And, um, it's dangerous. And so the previous planter was much longer and shrinking those two access points. It was wider. I don't think I had so much of the issue there. It's in the Caltrans driveway is probably why they shrunk that in. But it's the width of the driveway is a safety problem for us. And then also the permeable area, the site basically is 100, virtually 100% impervial, impermeable surface except for the small planter under the sign near the corner. And so, uh, I put, I got this statement off the county site where DPW sent in a comment and it said, was this a replacement or what? And they mentioned the dimension of what I assume was the previous planter. And I don't know if that's accurate. Maybe you can speak to that, uh, which was eight times more square footage was what was taken out than what's proposed to be removed. So our letter says, no net loss of landscaped area from the original approved plan should be allowed. And also, um, please utilize the landscape planter to reduce gas station highway frontage access points to one, thus encouraging highway access via Vermont. So on the Vermont side, you have two access points. And I've put in green there, this is just my suggestion, haven't run this by anybody yet, but just one thought, to extend the planter over to the corner planter and then also fill out that corner planter, uh, plant it out so it looks nice. And I don't know what square footage that would come up to, but, but it's just an idea. So, um, the, the appearance of having this landscape to soften this large paved area would be a benefit also restoring the permeable surfaces and also making it safer for bikes and cars too, for that matter, by controlling this access point. So, um, we have the applicant here tonight. Would you like to come up to the podium and say whatever you like?
Hi, I'm Ron Stefanic, 238 Valle El Granada. So I first, um, the correspondence goes back, I'm not sure when the county contacted the county, but I think Summer Burmison started to trade emails with the Department of Public Works in March of 2016? And then I got the first memo from Summer in December 2016, so.
Yeah, part of this delay was in code compliance.
Pardon?
Part of the delay since 2014 was it was just sitting in code compliance and nothing was being done.
Right, okay. So that clears that up. So, okay, so the reason, I realized that the, the other planter was larger than that. It was wider and longer. So, the reason why it was taken out was specifically because when the transport trucks come in and deliver grass, they always have trailers on them. So, not every time, but most times their rear trailer would run over the planter. To the point where it was starting to break up the planter. Even though we told the trailer trucks to try to come in the other way, they would still continue to come in this way. That was one of the bigger problems. The other problem was, is that one of the, uh, people that was using the gas station ran over the planter, got hung up on the planter. We offered to fix his car and, and he, um, he wasn't happy with that and he sued us. So, and then, over and above that, that was settled. And then three or four other people over time ran over it and we had to repair their car. So the reason why we made it smaller was for ease of the transport trucks to get in and out and also for the cars going, exiting and entering, uh, the filling station. So, it is encroaching in the California road. And so was that larger planter. So I met with Caltrans engineer on the site. And I explained to him, you know, I could push the planter in closer to the pumps if you want, but then the other planter is going to be out near right away. So after his inspection of how, how far away the planter was from the actual travel way of the vehicles, in his opinion, he said, you can leave it in the right of way and, and more or less line it up with the, the other planter, maybe not quite out as far. And then it would require an encroachment permit. And he said he would approve that. And that's pretty much the reason why we made it smaller.
Let me see if I understand. So you're talking about this?
Yeah, the, the Caltrans doesn't have a problem.
This is okay with Caltrans?
It doesn't line up exactly, but he's, but he said the other planter already encroaches in the, in the right of way. But there's such a, a wide strip between the planters, the existing planter and the new planter we're going to put in to the roadway, that he wasn't concerned about the encroachment because it's minimal. So his, his comment to me was, it's fine with me, just apply for an encroachment permit after you get your approvals.
So there is an access point here?
Yes.
And here. Could you show us where the trucks want to go, the big trucks?
They come right off of Highway 1 into the gas station.
So they don't want to use the street?
They, they, they could, but they don't because of the U-turn situation. Sometimes they do, but most times they come off right off Highway 1 and they run.
So they could come in here and go out over here?
They could, but it's, it's a tight turn if you, if you elongate that, that planter.
So do they air at the southern entrance primarily?
They mainly go right off of Highway 1 and turn in.
Are they going north or south when they come there?
Both.
Both.
Depending on which, which, uh, the point where we're buying the fuel.
This is part of the hazard in that, you know, you have a left turn pocket here and people, but people are just driving anywhere. They're driving out this way, out this way, in this way, uh, anywhere.
But they'll, they'll be doing the same thing. Because we're not going to close off the access points of the gas station, so they're going to do the same thing. They're still going to enter and exit the gas station at this point.
So you're saying-
It's completely legal.
You can't close this off?
No, no, we're not going to do that.
Anybody have any questions for, for Ron?
Well, I do. Um, so you're saying that you have some tort, uh, problems, uh, prior about people damaging their vehicles and suing you because you had to plan for your-
We've had damaged vehicles and we've had a bit more damage from the transport trucks. Even though we talked to the drivers, sometimes they, they, they go around, they try to go around, but then it will be a different truck driver and he takes the easiest point of access and exit. And they don't always hit it, but they hit it, they hit it a lot.
And you, uh, and you, uh, had to pay out settlements to some of these-
Absolutely.
I understand. I understand it's very difficult that there's, uh, many visitors to mid-coast who are not, uh, as respectful as they can be.
I think it's important to point out that the planters, when they were there, didn't really have any plants, which might have led to this, uh, people not realizing they were there. The curb was there. Anybody else have questions for Ron? Claire?
Would it be possible, and I understand what you're saying about the planter being hindrance, but it is really a free for all in there. Would, would it be any use in trying to go, do some like, um, paint of some sort on, on the ground to sort of show people how to get in and out, um, directing the vehicles?
We could, and, and look into that.
Dan?
Yeah, I can't help but being a little curious as to what kind of, you know, what kind of damage you'd be talking about. I mean, it's, uh, it's a curb, four inches tall.
It wasn't, you know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the extent of the damage. I was just informed by the owner that this has occurred in, in the past and this was the reason why it did. I don't know the extent of the damage, but he said one, there was one lock suit and there was damage to the other. So I assume it's, you know, it's only a four inch, I think it was a six inch curb. It's just a under damage, under, um, body damage, the frame and, I, I don't know exactly what it did. But people were hitting it and it was, it was a problem. That's why it was taken out.
Oh, could you go to the slide that shows the street view of the one that was there? So you see what I mean? The planter really didn't have any plants in it. So I could see how maybe somebody, although, I don't know, it was 13 feet wide, I don't know.
Coming off the highway at 50 miles an hour.
It's a dark area.
It's dark, yeah.
So if it was tall, I mean, taller curb and what, and more bushes.
Yeah, can I ask a question on the new planter? Is it the same height basically? It is, but we can make it higher, but, yeah, uh, it is. It's, I think it's only a six inch curb, but.
Seems like we're going to have the same problem then.
No, because it's, it's a lot narrower. It's exactly, exact width of the islands. There could, absolutely, there could be a problem. To be honest with you, we don't want to do it at all, but there's been a concern, so we're going to, we're trying to comply. But we're looking for a compromise. So I've already have the planning and Caltrans somewhat agreeing to what I'm doing. So I'm here now to get your opinion.
So we've had, uh, numerous planning studies over the years about improving safety and mobility in our villages. And like recurring, one of the recurring themes here, particularly in Moss Beach, which has so many side streets, is to, um, condense or consolidate or close some of them off, you know? And we resisted. In fact, when this came up, we said, why should we close off Virginia, for example, when we have this business with the whole thing is wide open? It doesn't make, it doesn't, it may, the one doesn't go with the other. It's like, it would seem like the first thing to do would be to consolidate the access points on the, um, frontage rather than to close off the street. I mean, like, um, so anyway, that's where this, part of where this came from, called attention to it.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone in the public wish to speak on this issue or ask for Bill? Can you come up?
I want to see if I can go for an answer. I don't want to do anything tonight. So I get a bitch.
It's a good idea. We should have little papers.
Thank you. Um, having been a long, long time listener of Moss Beach, could you go back to the overhead that, yeah? So the problem, I think Lisa was pretty clear on it and I fully agree with her. I live up on California. For all my working career, I took a left out of California, went over the hill to work. And I have seen, uh, more than a few hundred occasions, people flying north on Highway 1, gauging the traffic coming south and actually start turning into the gas station right up at that very southern end and pull in that way. You said it's legal. I don't think it is legal because the way the striping is there. I think they're supposed to use a left-hand turn lane, otherwise you've got a double stripe, which most CHP people would give you. Yeah, and they, they pull in right where your finger, no, no, yeah, even further south. I mean, they're just missing Lancaster and coasting in because they think they can get in there before another car coming down. I, I, I'm sorry that people are running over the planter and the rest of that. But it's usually because they don't want to start decelerating until they're south of California. I mean, is that, all of a sudden they realize they're out of gas when they get to the coastal market? Have to hang a quick right in there? I've been, I've been asking for years, since my daughter was not even big enough to cross the street on her own. The way they go flying through Moss Beach at supposedly it's 50, but they do well over 50. It should be 35. And I know a lot of people will scream and yell about that. But we have a lot of people crossing those streets and the traffic is so fast that they're going to pull in and they're going to hit stuff and they're going to run over stuff because they're not paying attention. But that's still, I mean, that, you need to put something in there because all the studies that you've just referred to, we know that if there is more stuff there, the roads are a little bit narrower, there's the planters or whatever, it slows the traffic down. And they have to be more conscious about it and say, you know, take a deliberate turn. You shouldn't be pulling into a gas station at over 25. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And you've got kids trying to cross over to the park, um, and it's a wide open corner. And, and the same is true when they, when they take off. They'll, they'll get a running, start on your apron and then just jump over into the northbound lane when they want to go north. And it's just, I mean, I've been living here long enough, I start to see people edging out. My foot is off the accelerator and already, ready to hit the brake because you're not quite sure is this idiot really going to jump out here and misjudge things or not? And we've had numerous accidents there. You're sort of contributing to it. You, you the property owner, you just, I know you're just working for them, I don't mean you personally. And the planter did help a little. But I, I think the idea that somebody who is a licensed driver in California can't pull in on the side street and make a left-hand turn into the gas station, I have to question why they have a license. I mean, I, I sit in the Costco, you know, uh, gas lane whenever I'm over there to get my cheap gas. And I, I don't understand why, you know, part of the driver's test isn't learning how to fill up your car and get the, get the nozzle in the, in the tank and drive slower going into a gas station. I mean, it's just flammable liquid in there. You don't want to be doing, you know, 40 miles an hour. So you should be trying to slow them down for your own, well, for your, the property owner's employee's safety and the, as, as the rest of it. So, I think it's, I think you could do more than just a little planter. And I personally, put a bunch of big rocks in it. Make sure if they damage their car, like really damage the damn car. And then you sue them for damaging your planter. You know, because the planter wasn't driving, the planter's sitting there. So it's like, you know, the person, the moving vehicle is usually the one that's at fault, but- So it's like, you know, the person, the moving vehicle is usually the one that's at fault. You know, I agree with you and it is just a big waste land there, an awful lot of open space. I mean, you know, I'm not the biggest one about trees and flowers and the rest of it, but I do agree with you, there's a lot of hard surface there that's just pure runoff that ends up going down to the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. We don't need it, so.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, back to the council. Chris?
Hi, Ron. So Ron's a neighbor of mine, lives across the street. Ron, I hope we can still wave at each other. It's not, again, as Bill said, it's, I know that you're a project manager for, for the owner, so it's not personally directed at you, but I do feel that we could do more here. Lisa has pointed out a couple of things in her presentation, I believe the second slide had zoning section 6121 that quoted a planter landscape area of at least four feet wide as something that might be required on this type of...
That was a, that was a presentation from four years ago.
Oh, four years ago, okay, well, it's, it's on the website, yes. So that cites at least four feet wide, then also, and it might be that presentation or this one, Lisa cited the Caltrans project development procedures manual, which says, quote, "Access openings to an expressway are limited to one opening per parcel." So this one shown here, actually putting a planter there now creates two openings and I would advocate one, closing this off right here as probably was originally it was, per the dimensions listed by DPW of 63 by 13. So we're, we went from 63 by 13 now to 34 by 3, but with still a six inch curb. So in my feeling is, nothing is going to change if that was the problem in the first place. So in the, per the letter, I would ask that we say 34, I mean, Ron says that they don't want to build it any bigger, so I don't, I would say bigger. And one of the things I would say about bigger is adding a height dimension on that. So we have 34 by 3, 34 long by 3 wide. I think we need to ask for two, two feet high. I mean, this is a, this is something that people will see and then you put some low shrubs in there to both beautify and protect. I still think that this is required here because if we look, can we go back to the picture? So this is the fence line, okay, but the driveway swings way out here. It's literally the entire, from Lancaster to Vermont is just, is just open area there. Even putting a barrier just right here, still seems like there's plenty of... I hear what you're saying, Ron, that they do what they want to do, but we've got some guidelines from Caltrans, we've got a zoning section ordinance, and we've got past history, which was the original permit had 63 by 13. So it seems like it needs to be a more substantial barrier, both for the, and then finally the highway mobility study indicated that for Moss Beach in particular, there's just too much, there's too much action going around all over the place and this is one way to help make it a little bit safer. You only have to look 300 degrees as opposed to 360 non-stop. That's a little bit, it's not great. So what I would say is, it needs to be bigger and better and per our letter, I don't know how to actually, how to do that without changing the letter so much, except to add a height dimension to our, to our dimensions.
I guess I would push back a little on the height of the curb. I think the height comes from the plants. I think normally any kind of frontage planter will just have a normal curb and then you pick plants that don't block sight distance at the corner, but they're enough, they're up there so that they can be seen, the formium that you had picked, that's a good tough one. And I, just to mention, you know, the Chevron Station in Happen Bay is on a corner and it only has, well, it's much bigger, so it has two access points on the highway, but, but they're smaller and then one on, you know, so the trucks can go, well, whatever. Another thing in my experience, at Pillar Ridge, we're getting, putting this humongous ADA ramp up to the clubhouse and taking out a planter in order to put in this paved ramp and county says, "No net loss of permeable area, dig out some pavement somewhere else to make up for this." And so that's why I put this in the letter, no net loss of landscape area from the original approved plan. Anybody else?
Per, per your comment about the curb, I would have normally agree with you that six inch curb, we don't want, you know, two feet of cinder block or two, a six inch curb and plants, but the past history indicates that that is part of the, that was part of the original problem and how even if you put a hardy plant there, if a truck tire can roll over a six inch curb, it sounds like it's going to, whereas they might think twice about a two-foot curb.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. I would like to add, maybe we could add some safety cones because if we have like some flashing or orange, something that makes it look official, you know, something that makes it look a little more public and, you know, especially in the dark at night time, it would help a lot.
Lisa?
Dave?
I wanted to say that when you're encroaching in the Caltrans right of way, they have a lot of concerns about break of way and damage that occurs to vehicles. So I think a low curb and plants out to the edge of the planter provide that visual barrier without risk of injury to vehicles or people in the vehicle. So I'm inclined to agree with Lisa, keep the curb low and the planter, the plants providing the visual indication. And yes, they will get damaged by trucks or cars some of the time and they just, part of the condition of this needs to be that they get replanted periodically.
They can start off to the formium that you had in your planting palette, you know, you can buy a 15, I mean, you can put in a big one and it's already, as soon as you put the planter in, you've got a three-foot tall plant there, a row of them, and they're very tough. And if they did get run over, even if you had to cut them off, they grow, I mean, they'd be a good plant there. It's very tough.
And then to respond partially to what Brandon said, I think we've heard pretty strongly from the community, they do not want flashing lights of any kind, so I don't, I don't think we want to see anything like that.
Dan?
So I would, I'd venture to say that the problems of the past with the accidents to property damage was due to inappropriate lighting. So appropriate lighting for, for the whole property, the whole property, is very important. I'm going to give some examples, you know, since this, the advent of the LED lighting, there's really been no enforcement, in my opinion, property owners just go out and they just buy whatever and it's often the brightest possible light they can get. People must understand that if you, if you overlight one area, you pretty much create a darkness in the other area. So no, no more light than's needed in the certain areas. And as far as the planter, certainly no light that would shine in any car, driver's eyes that would be any beaming off to any other neighbors. Just simple indirect low lighting to highlight that there actually is a planter box there. It's far enough out in the road that, you know, there's, and I am not an advocate of a, of a big, you know, one more, you know, freeway light, highway light pole right in front of it. It's just, it's just the appropriate lighting, low indirect, to just let people see that there's a planter there. And I think if that's done, they won't hit it.
Like pass lighting, right down the length of it.
Downward directing.
Yeah, indirect downward directing to highlight the foliage.
I mean, their own light is high, just so you can see it, but it's shining on the plants.
Yes, not, not in the driver's eyes and not off to the neighboring property owners.
Well, so we don't need to put that in our letter, that can be something that they could do, you know, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like the owner doesn't want to do this anyway, so it remains to be seen what the county will decide, but is there anything that anybody thinks really needs to change in this letter?
No, my comments, thank you for addressing the, you and Dave, the height issue, I understand that. I think with the two underlying sentences on this letter, that those are really the important points and that I would, I would make a motion right now to approve the letter as currently written. In fact, there's...
There a second?
Well, I would like to ask Ron a quick question. So you said that, I just don't get if you order the field trucks to come into the gas station, why couldn't you just order them to come in through the side street instead of whatever they, way they want?
On the argument of the history of all of the conversations between the truck drivers and so I'm just going by with the space manager that's been there for years, has told me he says that some truck drivers do it correctly, but then you get new truck drivers who are giving it to five points and we have to re-educate the driver to do this and that and then sometimes they don't pay attention and they go...
Do you think if you have like some arrows or some like things painted for them to direct?
We're able to do painting and I also agree to the education for the drivers, whether they follow that or not.
Do you think regarding this letter, the planters having trees would help and all that stuff?
Probably if it has some nice landscaping and they drove in it, you could sue them. Anyway, so we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of approving the letter?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Lisa, is it possible you have a copy letter or will I get it through the public?
I will, I don't have your email. I would send it to you if you, emailing me your email. They probably send it to you automatically, but...
They'll send it to you.
Yeah.
And if you don't get a copy, it will be on our Midcoast Community Council website as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on our page, but they generally do send them to the applicant or things, might have been my experience. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so next, I remember when I...
Can I make this one quick recommendation since I did mention some lighting? A lot of, a lot of people I think favor the warm, the warm light and not the, not the cool, the bright, you know, the blue, white, blue light, soft, warm light. Thank you.
How about you?
Okay, so this is Valmar Bluff we're on now, and I just want to run through, so the letter's been posted, draft letter's posted, it's, a lot of it's a reiteration of what we said on the previous projects. Now we have a four-house project, much improved, and so just let me run through some slides to applicants here tonight to speak or answer questions. Why isn't it...
Needs to be set in here.
It needs to what?
Need to set the display on.
Oh, come on.
There it goes.
No. So there it is indeed, Valmar Bluff. I think this is our third letter on this project. We've had a six-house project, a five-house project, now we have a four-house project and all the houses have been moved back towards Valmar Street. So here's the site plan. Of the four houses. Here's, from a previous slide presentation we had, there's the coastal prairie, this is a rare plant community, there's some very rare plants here and including this one, the coast yellow leptocephalosaurus that's found nowhere else in the world.
I think that's correct.
So the local botanist, Toni Corelli, mapped these, these are two other rare plants that grow there and the pinpoints in there show where they were located. This is her map of the area of coastal prairie that's found there. Basically, if a single plant is found that indicates there's a seed bank in that area, so just the fact of finding one plant is more significant than you might think. And the Midcoast Local Coastal Program prohibits residential development in environmentally sensitive habitat. So this is the first, so Xander Associates, they were, they're working for the applicant and this was their map of the non-native species in pink. The green is the coastal prairie grassland, the yellow is what they were calling a transition area, in other words, not as many native, native plants, and then the orange and purple were some pockets of choice things, grasses. You can kind of see the four houses under lane here, where they relate to that map. And this is the project landscape plan, the, the blue and red areas are ornamental and mostly native, except for some of the trees, but then the tan and the green area is going to be this conservation easement to protect it. The, as you can see, the shape of this along the houses is different than that. And some of the houses is quite close to the more pristine green. These are the back terrace or path or something. And then the drainage plan shows these infiltration trenches that will catch, capture the runoff and then infiltrate it, and so those, these would be dug along the back of each house and so, and they are definitely located in the conservation area. I, okay, I'm not relating this to the letter, so the letter goes over some of these points and one of the comments in the letter was that this perimeter fence around the outer edge of the easement should be a minimum 50% transparency. Basically, the, the reason for the fence is to give some visible, visual indication for the public using the trail that that's a private area and basically you don't want people jumping over or pets jumping over, so it needs to be an adequate height for that, but still you want people to be able to see this grassland, so that's why the 50% transparency would help. So now we have the story polls are up, this relates to, sorry, I'm not talking about the letter, but so part of the letter, we were supporting what the Coastside Desire Review Committee had asked for at their meeting on July 13th about the size and mass of the houses. So this sort of relates to that. You can see them, the story polls are not complete because of the density of the trees. This house down on the end is fairly complete. Most of these trees will have to be removed in order to build the houses, but this is the view from Winkie Cove and then this is a view looking through the story polls here on the first house and you, so you can see standing on the ground or the first floor, you have a completely unobstructed view from each of these houses. So the way they measure the height, the maximum building height in the RMCC, which is this zone, is the, this, the county has this legacy method of averaging. They average the finished grade and the average roof line and then that comes up with the, in this area, the maximum height is 28 feet, but when you do this averaging and you're on a slope, you can end up with the height above the coastal bluff, much taller than 28 feet, but it's within the, the way the county tells you to do it. And all the other residential areas on the coast side measure the maximum building height this other way where it's the natural grade to the topmost point of the building right above where you're standing. So this is the house on Lot 3, so the ocean is to the left, Valmar Street is to the right and there, for this particular house, they require 1,100 cubic yards of fill. So you can see the red, I, I put red on the existing grade and so the whole house is lifted and once again, this averaging method, so the top of the roof at this point is measured down to the finished grade here, not the existing grade. So whatever, apparently, and I have no idea how this works, but apparently when you put fill in, then that doesn't count as increasing the height of the house, but anyhow, it's definitely taller than 28 feet viewed from the bluff, which was the issue here from the beginning, what the council has, we haven't even looked at the houses. We've been looking at the footprints of the houses and trying to protect the shoreline from any kind of future armory, protect the trail. from any kind of future armory, protect the trails so it could move inland as the coast erodes, and protect the sensitive habitat of the coastal prairie, and move these houses back up to Valmar. Then it became apparent, when the story polls went up, that, that the view from this coastal trail and the beach would be, they, they are quite massive. So the Desire Review Committee, this was hand out from one of the members of the community to show for square footage, comparing with the others' houses in the neighborhood, and these four houses are the new ones proposed, significantly larger in square footage. That's it on the slides. Maybe we could add the lights? We don't need to look at these anymore, do we?
I don't think so.
Let me just look at the letter and see if I missed anything. So basically, in our previous letter, we asked for three or four houses along Valmar, back over there, and that's what we got. Thank you. We've got an easement for the coastal prairie, we have details to be worked out, and the opportunity that the trail can move inward as the cliffy roads. So the, and this next paragraph, the biotic easement perimeter fence, that's just about what's, what's needed to get that so there's a trigger to move the fence and that all happens smoothly, and from an appropriate distance from cliff to fence, so that it's safe for people. Then the coastal prairie paragraph is pretty much what we've been saying all along, that the, I think the issue here is that the community and particularly the more environmentally focused folks feel that this transition area on coastal prairie is, is important to preserve as well as the green, the tan and the green, and I think that, that's probably the disconnect between the applicant saying, well, it's all protected, and us saying, well, not quite. Anyway, then we talked about setbacks, or other methods to move this western edge of development back from coastal prairies, such as reducing house size, getting a setback variance, or other things, then we support the Desire Review Committee and their efforts to reduce height and mass. And then this last piece here, coastal hazard conditions. I was going to talk about this under Arbor Lane, because I'm going to put the same thing on that house. Basically, any house, any development that's proposed that might require future armory needs to have these conditions. Let me just read this, because it's going to be our boilerplate, I hope. Okay. Coastal hazard conditions of approval should be included, consistent with coastal commission requirements for other shoreline development, particularly in light of sea level rise. Prohibit future shoreline armory, require removal of development if it becomes unsafe to occupy due to threat of coastal hazards, require removal of debris that falls from bluff top onto the beach, I'm not talking about candy wrappers, I'm talking about pieces of your deck and stuff, you know. Require assumption of all risks, coastal hazards waiver of liability and indemnification agreement, and then require recordation of deed restriction imposing coastal hazard conditions as covenants, conditions and restrictions on use and enjoyment of the property. I just, we have, we have seen this wording, the coastal commission uses it, but I have not aware of the county ever applying this wording as a condition of approval. It has always been applied by the coastal commission when the project is appealed to them. Well, now ideally, this could be taken care of and not require that appeal, just to get this wording added, so. And also, as I was going to mention, even, the coastal commission will apply this wording, even if a parcel does not come right to the shoreline, even if there's another parcel between it and the shoreline. There was a project in Princeton that was approved with these conditions, and it was on Princeton Avenue, it wasn't the parcel that was, so. Anyhow, that's all I have. Any questions from the council first?
One question. It says, in the first, excuse me, second paragraph, more native grassland areas included in the proposed conservation easement with the promise of a deed restricted provision, dot, dot, dot. Can you elaborate on the promise? Because my-
Oh yeah, they're already working on it.
Okay, my, my concern is, this parcel already has some questionable stuff that nobody can nail down exactly when hap, when it happened, or how it got that way, the 1991 sale, whether it was going to allow to, to be in these smaller lots, and the zoning for this says they have to be five acre, but that, somehow that wasn't nailed down, and so that's been allowed to pass through. Other properties that we've looked at, the details about, well, we, we don't actually know when this got here, when that got here, these details seem to get lost in the process, and so we're taking it on faith that there's going to be a deed restricted provision. I guess my question that I've underlined is here is confirmed, question mark, like, how can we ensure that that's in there? The promise of a deed restricted provision, I'm sorry to be a cynic and a doubter, but...
Uh, no, that, as I understand it, that would all have to be ironed out before the actual CDP is issued, but it's not ironed out yet, but they're working on it.
We're away from construction.
I mean, I'd have to eliminate all these.
You want, you want to come up and just field the questions? That'd be great.
If you're, I don't want to-
If I'm saying the wrong thing, feel free to come up. No, really.
I just thought, there might be other questions before I-
Okay. Anybody?
I just have questions on setbacks. So, so these are setbacks from their backyard, from what I'm seeing, or are you, are you talking about setbacks from their backyard or their front?
The front.
All right, the front house from like the driveway to-
Move the house closer to Valmar.
Oh, so move it a little bit more back?
Towards the highway.
Towards Valmar.
Away from the-
Towards the-
Okay, so it's moving a little closer from, from, towards the front of the, to the front or driveway?
The houses will front on Valmar Street. Their backyards will be the-
The highway.
Will face the ocean.
Oh, face the ocean, so you want it to move a little-
Their RM-CZ has much bigger setbacks than the residential areas in the mid-coast, and they require 50-foot front setback, 20-foot side setback, which gives you 40 feet between each home, so much more spacious, but then again, the RM-CZ generally has a five acre minimum, so this is a bizarre juxtaposition here. But basically, if you, you can ask for a variance to reduce the setback, if you've got a good reason, and a pretty good reason would be to protect the sensitive habitat. This came up, it's in the continuance letter from the Desire Review Committee, it mentions if the, if the effort is made to, to get a variance and move it closer, then there are certain things the planner was saying that would have to be not happen, but it's all in their continuance letter.
Uh-huh. So in order to move it, you have to get it cleared for a couple of other-
You need to get a variance.
Got it, all right.
Anybody else?
And we're saying we support that.
Right.
Yeah, question?
Yeah.
So can I, I apologize if I missed it in your presentation, can I ask, what is the reduced, you know, by how much, reducing building height that was recommended by the Coastside Design Review Committee, and also the square footage, by how much?
They didn't ask for specific numbers, and it is in their continuance letter, and basically, I don't want to, I don't want to overlap what they do, and I just wanted to put it in there that we support the direction they're taking, and I don't want to get into the details of telling them what they should do. I don't, we, we try and avoid that, stepping on each other's-
No, I got, I got that, it's just that, yeah, by looking at it.
Sometimes it takes various iterations.
It does.
I mean, they come back and they come back, I mean, I don't know how it'll go. I don't know.
Yeah.
Anything else? Is that it?
Just, just emphasizing that I, I agree that they look out of scale.
Want to come up and speak?
Sure.
Owen?
So, to add a little background, a few things that I, for context, I came here primarily to talk about the biotic questions, but we are in the process of addressing all of these issues, and the feedback we've, we've got from the Desire Review Committee. And that, at this point, we're scheduled to go back in September, not August, so between now and then, we, we've already incorporated some of those changes, I'll come back and discuss that, but I want to back up and talk about the biotic question here, because it's something, from the beginning, when we began, look at the site, we took very seriously and looked at it very carefully, and so, the site, there's a, there is a significant biotic community that needs to be, that's been degraded over time by invasive species. A lot of the property, our plan is to restore the areas that are currently pretty degraded by encroaching invasive species. We've looked at this very carefully, we've, we've looked, we've had, you know, Mike and Lesley Zander, Zander Associates, been looking at the site since 2013, both in wet, we've had the advantage of wet winters and dry winters, to really understand what's going on there, but basically, we've got a situation that the status quo is not sustainable. That grassland will diminish to nothing if we don't remove the invasive species and get on it. So, and on top of that, we've got a very sensitive habitat on the county property westward of the site, so it's important to see this in the whole context, and, and on top of that, the, the tree line and the non-native trees has basically changed the pH of the soil, which makes those, that part of the site inhospitable to native grasslands. So we've got a, a narrow area that we're working to restore. Both Lesley Zander and my other biologist, who's written, we have a comprehensive plan to restore the grasslands, there's a copy of which, I don't know whether it was in your package, I provided to Lisa as well.
It's posted on our, our page.
Okay, and so I, I brought a couple of copies, and then in addition to that, we've had, and that, Jody McGraw, who's a specialist, and I, part of my background in one of my other projects, we have, we've created a, what's called a conservation bank that's, that's sanctioned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, so I'm, and that involves the sale of credits, and we have restored a piece of property and maintained that and for the sale of credit, so I've got some familiarity in how this, this works, and so, we're, we've, so we've done two things, we've done three things. We've got a conservation strategy that we intend to make part of our essentially HOA that would, in perpetuity, well, the first phase during the construction, it'd restore the habitat, and the, the map that Lisa shows, less than, the areas that are in gray, less than, according to Michael's, Michael Zander's work over the last five years, less than 5% of the, of that area has native species, so that's why it's so important that the bulk of that site be restored. Bottom line is, we're not encroaching significantly on any of that habitat, and we're restoring significantly more than any part of the encroachment, so let's talk about the setback for a minute, 50 feet. So the site has some interesting characteristics that I think are beneficial to development. One of them is that it's got a very, pretty steep drop-off from Valmar, which allows the homes to be lower. Now, placing the, as opposed to most of the homes, the other part of the setback issue in the RM-CZ Zone District is that, well, there's a 50-foot setback, there's also a 20-foot side yard setback, which means we've got 40 feet between the homes, when you combine the two side yard setbacks. So that, taken together, and frankly, the removal of some of these invasive or non-native trees, will open up the view significantly down the, to the water from Valmar and Highway 1, but, but the other part of this, in order to keep the homes low, we need to have a steep driveway from Valmar down to the homes. The homes, driveways now are 15%. Moving the homes closer to Valmar creates a problem, because we don't have enough length to make the driveways work, which would require more grading to keep the homes lower, and so we've worked carefully, while a 50-foot setback is, is unusual, these sites are all over half an acre, or nearly half an acre, so they're much, the, the properties are much larger than any of the homes on Valmar, in fact, twice as large, as in, for, for comparison, across Juliana, there are five homes, each on 5,000 square foot lots, so we're essentially building one home, and so that's about 25,000 square feet, so our proposal is to build one home on, on lots that are about 22,000, one of them's over 30,000 square feet, so that's, I'm sorry?
I said the other side of Juliana is zone used to make the-
Well, I didn't create the zoning, I'm just complying with the zoning, I'm pointing out the purposes, that, for the purposes of, of looking at the site, the density is quite a bit less than across Juliana.
Well, it is, it is-
Be that as it may, it's, it's the-
It is, it is less dense, but it's also RM zone, which is open space, whereas-
The zoning allows one house per, per single family lot.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know, the-
So we're, the point is, we're complying with the zoning, but by complying with the zoning, the density's reduced, that's what I'm saying, and so, when, on the one hand, we want to compare, and I also want to point out, the two newest homes on Valmar are over 3,000 square feet, the 2010 Valmar and 2009, the two most recent homes. Comparing homes that were built in 1910 to homes now, I don't, you know, that were built as, as beach cottages in terms of square footages, is not, on lots that are, want, less than one-fourth the size, is not a fair comparison, and, and we've done, and particularly when you, I don't know why you're shaking your head, but-
Just, Bill, give the guy a break, okay? Just let him, all right, well, don't shake your head, don't, don't look at Bill.
Well, my point is, taking the whole neighborhood in context, it's, there's, it's important to look at the neighborhood in its actual context, not in a theoretical context, so that's all I'm trying to say. So anyway, I kind of, been long-winded discussion, but the issues that we, that have been raised, we've addressed, and we've addressed thoroughly, we have, in process to address Mr. Johnson's question, we have a biotic, we have a, a conservation easement that will be held by a third-party conservation bank, that, I mean, I'm sorry, third-party land trust, land, and they will, and there will be funding available to maintain that in perpetuity, and that, we've agreed to do that, and we expect that to be a condition of the final approval, and we're prepared for that. As far as coastal erosion, we have the benefit of much wider lots than most of the lots on Valmar, we've looked at, we're 50 feet over sea level at this point, where, where our two coastal geologists have looked at the homes, we're at least 75 years lifetime for these homes, and under the most conservative sea rise assumptions, so we have no problem conditioning these for, you know, as, as, as you know, many new coastal developments are conditioned that way by the coastal commission, and we have no problem with that, those conditions. So, anyway, I, if those, if you, how, if, if you haven't read the conservation strategy, I guess it's on the website, wasn't aware of that, and the letter, the review letter from Lesley Zander, it's available on the website, so if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Oh.
Go ahead.
So, I just want to make sure I understood you. You are saying, if I understood you correctly, that you do not want to move the houses closer to Valmar, because you want to take advantage of the drop-off as it, as it goes away from Valmar?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. The geometry of the driveways make it difficult to move the houses closer because of the steepness of the driveways, it's not a question of want, and thirdly, closer to Valmar means the houses would be higher, which means, or there'd be significantly more grading, so that means they would be more intrusive visually. So the, so we have concerns about how we would, you know, address, you know, make the house, you know, make the driveways functional- make the driveways functional, and move them closer to Valmar. So.
The previous version did have.
The houses were.
20 feet, 20 feet from Valmar.
But when we reduced, those homes were much higher, and when we reduced the, all those homes had 50-foot setbacks on the front yards.
Yeah, but they were 20 from Valmar because they were.
Side yards. That's true. We had a lot more driveway, that is true. But when we went to four lots, all of the homes had to be accessed off of Valmar. Those earlier iterations had a different driveway configuration. So we would be, I'm not sure how we can, you know, deal with the different geometry of the layout and do that. But it's not that, you know, we're certainly willing to look at, you know, different ways. I think, if I'm hearing correctly, I think the main, I mean, I think because the other homes are in the tree canopy, there's less concern. There's a, even though we do believe that Lot 1, that we're not impacting, at least not significantly, the biotic area, and overall improving the quality of habitat significantly, it seems like there's most of the concern about Lot 1. Although, if you look at a site plan, it's about the same as the others.
Yeah, no, there's others, like three, actually, I have a question for you. I was looking at this today. So the Lot 3 and 4 have, like, 1,100 cubic yards of fill, imported fill. So I mean, I don't really understand this. I understand how you can have, if it soaps down, the house is going to appear smaller from Valmar, but why would you build up the whole house?
Well, the house is not.
We can't step down or something?
The houses are not, well, there's relatively, it's a few feet of fill underneath the house. There's also a driveway where, so in order, there's two levels to the house. The houses are essentially a reverse plan. So you enter on the upper level, and you go down to the lower level. So, in order to drive off of Valmar, come into your driveway, enter the house, and then step down, there's a, there's a relationship to the geometry of driveway slope, the house elevation, and all these things have to fit together to work. So that's, and that's, so in some cases, the houses are, there's less fill, in some cases, there's a little, there's some fill under the house. But it's all about making the driveway geometry work from Valmar, so that, in other words, at some point, you have a fixed height, you have a slope, you have a height, and that yields an elevation in relation to Valmar. And when you take all those things into consideration, you end up with a house at a certain elevation. Because a 15% slope driveway has to have a certain amount of run to, you know, to function, and so, and that yields a certain elevation, I think that's the best way to explain it.
So the gap between the garage and the house, so the garage is set at 50-foot setback, and you've got your driveway, and you're at the right grade for the garage, why can't the house move up next to the garage?
We're certain, there are, well, one, the houses are attached, we're certainly, we're, certainly, we'll, would discuss with the architect if there's a way we can move.
Because it's house number two.
Yes.
It's like that.
Attached. Exactly. So the, basically, it all comes down to driveway geometry. If my civil engineer was here, he could explain it better, the relationship. But we would look at reducing that, and I'll certainly, will look at those houses that don't have attached garages, if there's a way to move them a little closer.
Yeah, just sort of condense it in. Then, so like I'm saying, Lot 1 and 2, you know, is cut and filled, and it sort of deals with the slope. But 3 and 4, like I say, large amount of fill, and the whole house is raised up, even so that when you get to the edge of the prairie, there's a drop-off then, because if added this fill, that makes the house taller.
Again, that's real, because we had to, in order to make the houses, otherwise, the houses would have to be. Otherwise, the houses would have to be farther down the slope, in order to get a 15% driveway to work. So that.
Yeah, but the driveway is up there.
I think what we're suggesting, Ron, sorry to cut you off, Lisa, but, is that you don't go with a 15% slope, you go with a shallower slope.
That's making the house higher, but that's not, that doesn't work.
Well, that's, that's what we're saying, is bringing the house closer, and it doesn't have to be 20 feet, but we're saying less than 50 feet would be better.
But if.
And yes, I understand what you're saying, that makes the house higher, and that's why I asked the question about the drop-off.
So we'd have more fill. In order to do that, we'd have significantly more fill, because the house would have to be higher.
Well, you'd end up with a slightly different house design, and garage design. Because as I recall, part of what's going on about the slopes and the issue with the driveway, is there's a large parking, I'll call it plaza, in front of the garage, and that would be much harder if you're closer to Valmar.
So, it's not a parking plaza.
I, I know, but.
Okay, let me explain. To drive into the driveway, you can't back up a 50-foot driveway, you need to turn around.
Right. But if the driveways are shorter, anyway, I'm just saying, I understand the, I understand the issue.
I'm not sure it's clear, so I think we need to, because I think, you know, I wasn't, didn't come prepared with my architect and civil engineer to discuss this issue, but we're happy to discuss it. I mean, because we've looked at this very, very carefully. So, we, and we've looked at all of the options carefully, and maybe it seems easy, but it's, turns out, it's complicated. I'll just.
Well, we're fully aware that it's complicated, and we're just sort of, in our letter, it puts out goals and possibilities of ways, we don't want to tell you how to do it.
Well, we.
Yeah.
Right.
You don't need to bring your engineer, we don't, I don't want to get into a discussion on engineering. I mean, I don't.
Right. And, you know, this is sort of tied in with the idea of making the houses less massive to be in.
So.
So that might also all work together.
We, first of all, the mass of the house doesn't change the elevation of the house.
No, but if you.
And so, let me finish. We have taken, we have reduced, we have new plans that are less, that are somewhat less, are somewhat smaller, that we will have that discussion at Design Review in September. But we've really, in order to make this all work, create this dedication, put all these pieces together, we, there's a lot of moving parts. And I'm, I'm happy to sit privately and go through it, whatever it takes to get you to see what all of the pieces of the puzzle are that we've come to work, that we've come to work with. Because we, we're, we think we've done a pretty good job, given all of the complexity of the sites, but.
Kathy, let's, let's open public comment, and each come up one at a time. Okay, just hold off a second. Yeah.
So, on the driveway grade, so you're using 15%, is that, that's your goal?
It's not a goal, it's what's required, it's the maximum grade allowed by Public Works.
Okay.
Okay. So, can't be steeper, is what the point is. And it could only be.
There's, it would be possible to ask for variance.
On the steepness of the driveway?
That's driven in part by the fire departments, they don't, they really don't like steep driveways.
And you, and you wouldn't want, it wouldn't be.
Fire truck's not going to park in front of the garage.
But they want to be able to get equipment.
You know how big the trucks are now?
Let's not go this deep into the weeds, okay? Can we open?
You can, I don't think we would ever be granted, granted a variance on driveway slope. I've never heard of such a thing.
Okay.
All right, what I'd like to do now is open public comment, and Owen, you could sort of hang around in case they ask a question of you.
Sure.
Kathy, did you want to be first? Or James?
Yeah. This is Jim Lockhart. Basically, we, my wife and I, strongly support the letter from MCC regarding the Valmar Bluff houses. Certainly, things have come a long way from where we started, and the general direction's been positive, getting close to something that should work. I would say the biggest thing that we see is just the mass and scale of the houses, and really do hope that the applicant will take seriously the concept of removing the third floors, and then lowering, not just removing the third floors, but lowering roof lines accordingly. I think that would go a very long way toward making the houses fit the setting better, and more closely match the surrounding houses in mass and scale and height. Everything around, in the immediate vicinity, is one-story or two-story, there are no three-story. And, you know, this, this really has a, you can't see this too well, but it's, these are story poles for Lot 1, that is a six-foot tall person, right there, that scale, and, you know, that's the size of Lot 1. So, it's really those third floors, when you stand on the beach, you see those third floors just right across. It's really very intrusive to use from the bluff trail, from the beach, from the public areas, Fitzpatrick Marine Reserve, and so forth. So, you know, that would be the hope, to get those third floors pulled down. As far as the setbacks, I agree, you can only go so steep on the driveways. On Lot 1, as Lisa was mentioning, it really looks like there's space between the garage and the house, that doesn't need to be there, and pulling the house up to the garage would take it away from the coastal prairie, and again, reduce some of the view intrusion from the, from the bluff trail. And I think the Design Review already, we discussed fences, I believe you're sort of looking at eliminating fences between the houses and on the sides of the property, and also keeping the front fences low, to keep the, keep the visual corridor in place as much as possible. So again, we support the letter, and really hope that, coming back to the next Design Review, that we'll see the height of these houses coming down. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Bill, sorry. Chris, you're next.
Bill, you get a sticker. With a pin.
Come on up, come on up, Bill.
Can I shake my hand now?
Yes, do anything you want, it's your turn.
I didn't know I couldn't shake my hand when I was listening to somebody, and I was in disbelief. I agree with what the gentleman just said, the third floor in Moss Beach, hmm, you know, Leonard used to say this, and I love quote-unquote, "We're dying by, you know, death by a thousand cuts," you know? It used to be one-story houses, and it was two-story houses, three-story houses, next thing you know, we can have tall apartment buildings. I actually just wanted to say, as always, Lisa, excellent letter, I like the direction you're taking this in, the whole board. I mean, we have to try to maintain what we have left on the coast side. I'm still confused, I thought there was a whole bunch of issues, like Chris just alluded to it, I had forgotten about this, that it's supposed to be RM zoning, you know, one house for every 5,000 square feet or whatever. And the other interesting piece of it was, is that it wasn't serviced by the sewer companies. Have you guys looked at that? What are they going to do about that? Because I don't think you could put a septic tank on it.
There's a letter, there's a letter from Montero Water and Sanitary Districts saying they will serve the project.
They will. They will, even though it's RM zone.
They didn't, they wouldn't serve the flag lot parcel that was there, but that's gone now.
Okay. Okay. I will talk to them about that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I guess, I don't know, because it was written up, I just love how we keep waving these things, and then I'll go back to Leonard again, death by a thousand cuts. We don't, we don't hold up.
Leonard said that the 1970-whatever said could serve RM, but the thing is, even if that holds water, and you get that objection, then all Sam has to do is say they amend it, and it's, you know, it's not going to stop this project.
I'm talking to her, this is my time. I didn't interrupt you, I shook my hand, I didn't interrupt you.
Come on, Bill, just speak.
Anyway, please, try and get this reduced. Like the gentleman said, the third floor, and, you know, this idea of mass is much more out of scale than.
Go to the Design Review Committee meeting.
I will, I missed the last one, I wasn't out.
That's their approval.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Chris.
My name is Chris Lang, I am Moss Beach resident and the alternate Design Review rep. Melanie is the rep. So I am not voting on this project, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with regard to Design Review. The applicant continually refers to his ability to build at certain height and certain size, because planning and building allows for those things based on the size of a lot. That doesn't have anything to do with Design Review. Design Review is in large part about considering size and scale and character of the neighborhood. In Moss Beach, I'm not sure how close to, how close in proximity to these lots, but there are really tiny little infill lots that are coming before Design Review. And not too long ago, about two years ago, there was an infill lot on the top of Seal Cove, that somebody wanted to build on, and he brought two different designs back, and eventually lost confidence in his ability to get the project approved because it was too small. The houses up at Seal Cove were so big, that the argument against approving this project was that it didn't fit the size and scale of the neighborhood because it was too small. Now, if you know Moss Beach, you know there's a lot of little infill lots that are sitting out there waiting to be developed. If these projects are approved at the size or near the size they are, they're twice the size of the largest buildings in the area. They tower in size, scale, bulk, mass, they don't fit in any way to any of the houses around them, and eventually could prohibit people from building in infill lots. So when you think about what you can do, according to building and planning, cast that aside as it relates to the letter that you're writing, with Design Review in mind. Because these buildings don't fit Design Review standards at all. The third story is unnecessary, the space over the garage is empty, undesignated space that has potential access points and windows. It's not even shown on the plan as a room or anything, but it's completely finished space. There's, they're massive, the car parts, you know, we talked about, you know, you need to drive in and then turn the car around because you can't do it at the street level. You can fit six cars in those. And Dave Holbrook, during the meeting, said it would be possible to issue a variance, to pull those garages up to the street. Lop off that unused space on top of the garage, reduce the size of the homes, it'd be more in scale with homes in the neighborhood. It's, it's difficult, it's not going to be easy. If you want to build a 6,000 square foot, you know, a series of 6,000 square foot homes.
These homes are not 6,000 square feet.
To bring them in compliance with Design Review standards, there's going to have to, it would require some, some changes, going back to drawing board. So, thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the council have any questions or comments? Brandon?
So, so regarding houses and lots, I do, I'm not an expert in this field, so still learning quite a lot about this, but regarding, I understand that building a house on a slope has lots of engineering problems, especially with the sloppings and the gratings and the garages. And, and I think that, personally, I think all of this should be more simplified regarding whether you're going to grant a variance or not, and moving up now. But what I think is that, in keeping with the scale of the neighborhood, that should be kept in mind, you know. I, before I lived in Moss Beach, I grew up and lived in Hillsborough. We, many of these houses, if you scream, your neighbors not going to hear it. I mean, many of these houses are very spaced apart. Hillsborough has a very strict zoning code regarding space. I remember, Mommy, why can't we add another room above there? And he says, oh, because the city doesn't allow it. So, I mean, and so that's how Hillsborough kept its character of being very spacious, it doesn't look disorganized with how, some houses bunched together, some houses not bunched together. And I think that what we need to keep in mind is to keep, keep the housing grids to be a little bit more neater, and more organized, and a bit more spacious. But on the other hand, I don't want to, I don't think the council should be saying, oh, you know, I think Lisa mentioned it earlier, saying specifically, oh, it should be this many square footage, it should be this many levels, or whatever, that should be left to some of the other committees. So that's all I have to say, and I'm going to yield my time.
Dave?
So, I did want to say, because I don't know that anybody other than Lisa said it is.
is, we really appreciate how much you've worked with the community on this. This is a far, far better project than it started out and we really appreciate that. Even if it's built exactly as it is right now, it is still head and shoulders above what it was. And preserving that prairie is really important. That said, we have, as have many other communities, seen an escalation in house size out here and it's not something that I personally like. So, you know, I don't vote on that, but I know a lot of people in the community don't like the larger houses and you've heard from a lot of them. That said, there's other people who do. So, I'm just asking that if possible, the mass as seen from the coast be reduced. I'm much less concerned about the view from Valmar.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say in short that, you know, you look at some of these pictures and you see the mass, and this is not just this project, but it's many projects around the coast side that, you know, where the house just looks so obviously out of scale. To me, what I hear is, I don't care. The owner, you know, just, it just yells that to me. Like, I don't care, I'm bigger. And I didn't mean to, I'm just saying that's what I get, you know. I don't, you know, that's what I hear. I don't care when I see this massive building in an area that kind of doesn't look like it belongs.
Chris?
Yep. To summarize, this project is just painful all the way around. I'm sure Owen is feeling pain. I know people that are around the neighborhood that this is one of those projects in the community that just hurts all the way around. And I'm usually the biggest sounder of the negative horn, but I do want to say that I appreciate the process on this and that we've, you know, from the pre-application hearing to design review, we're working through a really difficult issue for the community. We're going through the right channels and we're moving in a direction that is more palatable. I mean, it's never going to be, I look at the lockards, it's never going to be, you know, good enough to be satisfying for you and I understand that. Owen, it's never going to be the vision that you first had, right? So, that compromise is part of the process and I appreciate how this project has moved through it, however painful. And I would say per this letter, which I totally support, I really also support the section on building height mass. I'm also a member of the design review committee. I read the continuance letter. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to the meeting, but I was just wondering how Melanie was going to handle, you know, this tough project with a lot of information. But I felt that the continuance letter, from my experience, it was spot on in terms of this project is now in the hands of design review. Planning has signed off on certain square footages and things like that. MCC has ushered this through pre-application process and at least the second or third meeting in which this has been on the agenda. It's a continuance in design review and this is part of the process and it will continue to change somewhat as it goes through design review to the hopes that when we get to the end, it's a project that Owen can feel proud of and it's a project that people in Moss Beach can accept. And I really appreciate Melanie and Chris, the two Moss Beach design review community reps, super hard, but I thought that continuance letter was very, very excellent and that's where we're going now on this project. And so, it's in design review's hands and I have total confidence that it's going to be as good as it can be. But I appreciate the process, totally support this letter.
So, do I have a motion?
I will move if we adopt the letter.
A second.
So, I just wanted, before we vote on that, or whatever, I just want to say these sort of closing remarks that, you know, I understand that these houses are big and it'd be great to make them look smaller from the bluff. But I mean, overall, overall, this project has been a huge success, you know? And I've been on this council for five years now and worked really hard on some very obvious things that were really very small and thought, is this worth it? But this is big, what's happened here. That piece of property is just, it had to be saved. And the way these houses are located, it's good for them too. They've all got an unobstructed view, they're safely backed, you don't need to worry about the hazard thing. You're going to contribute, they're going to contribute this effort to preserve that prairie for everyone and they will be looking right at it and it's good for everybody. And so, thank you on this. Shall we, all in favor of the letter?
Aye.
Not going to vote? So, six, five, zero, one. Thank you. Thank you, Owen. Last, we have council activity. Anybody have anything to report?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, the Corey Park master plan, the second meeting was held last night. It was unfortunately somewhat abbreviated, communication problem, the school folks weren't there to open up my professor's room. So, we held it outdoors in the courtyard.
Oh, hold on just a second. There's a room out there, you can talk. Shut the door. Thanks.
Anyway, I was just sort of wandering while the noise died down. Anyway, so it was relatively small changes from the first set of ideas that they had picked up, some of the stuff that was discussed at the first meeting, come up with a more narrower sad meeting last night was mostly to try and get people to agree or at least come up with several concepts of what to do with the flat areas in terms of pump track, dog areas, pickleball courts, disc golf, et cetera.
When you say flat areas, does that include Mariner Surf East?
It did include it to some extent, but it wasn't, it kept getting done as an add-on, but yes, it did include.
Sorry, what's this?
Mariner Surf East. Yeah, I had every intention of going last night, but you know, but whatever, I didn't make it. But I'm interested to know about the concept of the community center there or how the disc golf people were doing.
Community center was not discussed at all. And there were, I would say, 18, 19 people there other than the various county folks. All of us going to show up on the website in the next few days.
Oh, that would be good.
Did they say when the third meeting is? I thought it was postcard.
Posted on our homepage.
Yes, it's in October if I remember correctly.
Of course it is. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, look at my notes here, see if I need to censor anything. The coast side design review, you know, I don't know if you've been aware, we had, Laura's been announcing this for like ever about these vacancies and we have it posted on our website as to where to apply and it says the deadline for the applications is in August. But apparently there was a whole, and we traditionally, the mid-coast council gets to send a rep to the interviews, to supervisors interview applicants and apparently since last January, that whole system broke down. We were completely unaware that there was an application period in the winter that ended in March and apparently there were applicants who were interviewed and chosen and they were going to be appointed at yesterday's meeting. But I found out about this and apologies were given and I was assured that the MCC would be kept informed in the future and included in the interviews and they postponed the appointment to after the deadline that's posted. But they're basically, they've been short one architect and so the, at the last meeting, which had Armor Harbor Lane and Valmar Bluff, there was one architect and there was the community rep. Well, the community rep is going to be out of the country in September, so this new architect will then make a quorum, so we're going to have a brand new person. We have nothing about deciding on Valmar Bluff, so that'll be interesting. Well, this is lame, I'm sorry. So, I went to the weed management area meeting yesterday because it was here and it was supposedly going to have jibot grass on the agenda, but that consisted of John Bell, Beal, he's from the county ag department and he had some comments about that County Parks had some funding to do jibot grass work, sort of emanating out from Pillow Point Bluff, you know, along Airport Street and Airport property, just trying to. And apparently this money came, the understanding I got was it was money that DPW had been allotted to use to clean up jibot grass down in Pescadero at their yard and maybe, but anyways, seems to have been redirected. And I had an email exchange with Sarah Berkland today, acting director, and because we had sent a letter in January asking for supervisor Horstli to support an ongoing revenue source for County Parks to deal with jibot grass and other invasives. And he said he would and she did confirm that there is $200,000 over the two-year budget cycle that's for invasives for County Parks. And Ramona is the one that we haven't heard from yet as to just what she's planning to do. Sorry, it wasn't much of a report. Anyway, that's all I have. So, future agendas, we have tentatively the draft revised subdivision regulations are coming to us, but maybe it won't happen then. And also, we have the Arbor Lane item that was continued so the applicant could be here. But it's just the same letter I've already written. It's pretty much just an expansion of what we wrote before with this new, okay. Anybody else have any ideas for the agenda?
We had talked last time about whether or not we should write a letter about the airplane noise. Do we want to consider that?
You brought it up, I don't think we talked about it.
Who was, who's talked about it?
Don had a bunch of information he offered to that, whoever that brought, who brought that up.
Harvey.
Harvey brought it up and then Don said a bunch of things which were not captured in the minutes, but of course, they're on video. And we also had Dave Pine's aid. No, actually, Ellie reached out and offered Dave Pine's aid to come and talk to us about the San Francisco Airport Roundtable. And we hadn't made a decision on that, but that's a possibility. I don't know from, Owen, I can also, I've been real busy, but I can post now this information from Jackie Spear and the letter she got pretty well lays out how the thing works and who does what and what the, you remember what Donna said about the FAA and, anyway, whatever. I should get the information posted. Does anybody besides Claire think we should have an agenda item on that?
So, let me ask a question. Do you see this as a forum, us taking action, writing a letter, something where we just get an informational presentation? What are you thinking of?
He's talking to you.
I thought he was talking to you. Well, it seems like an evolving issue. There were more things brought up tonight than had previously been on the table. Having, Harvey was here saying, okay, we're writing a letter, it'd be nice if you guys did too. So, that's where I was coming from there. But I think getting more information, having a presentation with us, maybe be more useful because we need to know what we're talking about.
Well, I can post the information, but, so we got this, where'd it come from? The thing from Jackie Spear?
It was.
It came from Don.
Don, Don, and it was from, I think it was from Dave Pine's.
Yeah, I just didn't have time to deal with it, getting ready for this meeting, but it's, email came from Don, it was to Dave and me and whoever else. And it's this information from Jackie Spear basically happened, Bay sent it, he was writing to Jackie Spear. And this is her reply already. And so, let me look through that and we'll figure out.
Why don't we, consideration for future agendas, that next time? Unless something comes up that we're ready.
As far as your question, Dave, what would this agenda item be? The only thing I could envision is that people will come and complain about the airport noise and they will not find anyone to help them here. They might find, if we had the person come, they might find out more about the San Francisco Airport Roundtable, but there's other ways to find out about that. I mean, we could put that out there on Nextdoor and things like that.
And the county, the county is pretty much already on the side of the residents and there's like, I don't know, 400 replies on the various Nextdoor threads about this. So, I personally don't see that there's much point in doing it and having it on our agenda.
Well, if we did write a letter of support and I would need to be more educated on it, because I've seen the Nextdoor posts and it hasn't really percolated into my mind. But if we had an informational session which came, which led to a letter of support, which sounds like.
A letter to whom?
Would have to be to.
It's an H A, so you're talking to Jackie Spear and she's already on it.
Yeah, okay. Let me finish. I'm saying like, I understand, like, you know, we're not going to move the needle at all, but this, to me, this is one of the things of like, even having it on the agenda with a relatively benign letter to whoever Happling Bay sent it to Jackie Spear and even though she's already on it, saying, thank you for being on it, it's a big issue and letting people come and, you know, line up and complain for three minutes, it has an effect of soothing effect somewhat. People feel like, yes, we can't do anything, but if people don't know that by now, and then I can't help them. But it does help to come and make a comment to a public body, a public comment that is on the record about a topic that's bothering you. We've had this issue before where it does offer a little bit of comfort to people to feel like somebody's listening, this is on the record, this is an issue near dear to my heart, finally I can go up and say my three minutes. And so, even if our desired outcome was spleen venting, it still has some value to me. This isn't, as an issue that's on people's minds of the community right now, to me, that's the value of having this as an agenda item, but only if we were going to vote on a letter of support. And I don't have the details on that right now, like you ask who would it even be to? I don't even have that. But as a theoretical, like what good would it do? To me, it would do that good.
Here's the problem that I see. These people who want to go and talk to someone who can help them, they need to go to the roundtable, not to us. We can't help them.
But they, but I hear you, but they see us as their bodies.
It's a false comfort.
We can have the role of telling them the roundtable exists and that's where they should go.
Yeah, but we don't have to have this on the agenda to do that.
Looking at Nextdoor, people were pathetically grateful to City of Happling Bay for having sent a letter to Jackie Spear. I think there's some sort of community relations aspect to this. I agree with this. Yeah, yeah, it's a PR, community relations of like, we hear you, we got it, you know, somebody hears you.
All right. So, it sounds like we have at least two people who would like something on the agenda. I would suggest those two people go develop an agenda item.
And write a letter.
And write a letter, yeah. If that's your desire to have. So, some future agenda.
Anything else? Then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, we're not adjourned.
Sorry.
Come on, I said anything else.
I'm really slow tonight. So, this thing about Richard Moss going off over the edge and they've got this big campaign going, put in barriers, not only where he went off, but on the other side. And this ties very much into the issue that Don Kito was speaking to, very limited shoulder space on one. One of the places they were talking about putting it was on Green Valley on the inland side and there is no shoulder to speak of there. I walk there fairly regularly, I was just there two weeks ago. So, I'm going to keep following that, but I might want to have the council weigh in with a letter to council meetings on that if it looks like it's going to go anywhere.
What would be your position, like supporting?
Well, that's not appropriate. I don't think that's appropriate.
Yeah, sorry. But yes, it would be focused on safety issues overall, not just of cars. But yes, it would be focused on safety issues overall, not just cars.
Okay.
Dave, did you go to their, I think there's a website or a hashtag or something up there, did you go? Do you know what barriers, you mentioned the gray...
All right, this is first, this is future agendas, you can talk to him after the meeting.
Yeah, well, let's talk after the meeting.
It's important, it affects the whole community.
I know, but we're not, it's not on the agenda tonight.
We can't talk about it as an item, yeah.
We can't go into it now. He's going to consider putting it on the agenda. If you want to sponsor it, you can talk to him offline. We can't talk about that now.
Can't just share information, that's it?
It's iffy.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll talk to you later.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.